I'm gonna call this meeting to order. Um, roll call.
McKnight?
Here.
Myers?
Here.
Roa?
Here.
Vogel?
Here.
Kinder?
Here.
Uh, pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Uh, public comment on agenda item?
None.
Notice of executive session meetings?
Uh, there was an executive session held December 13th to discuss litigation and then another prior to this meeting on December 19th to receive Google advice.
Communications.
Approved minutes?
Oh, I'm sorry. Um, approved minutes.
Motion.
Second. Uh, discussion. Roll call.
McKnight?
Aye.
Myers?
Aye.
Roa?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
And Kinder?
Aye. No, because your case should start.
Uh, none.
Uh, management's report?
Uh, so a couple items. First, the right to know request updates were at $6,800 for fees, uh, 92 right to know requests. Second item is just an update on ABC appointments. You'll see, um, a motion to approve for the zoning hearing board later. The rest of the appointments, um, recommendations will come before council at your January 2nd meeting. We are still waiting for a couple interviews to happen, um, and then also waiting on some recommendations just to come through from those who interviewed. I will note that Kevin Scott from the planning commission has submitted his resignation, uh, so that makes four vacancies on the planning commission. There was an additional applicant to be interviewed, uh, so there are four applicants on the table for the planning commission. I will also note that, uh, Mariana Silva intends to resign from the beautification committee at the end of this month. They have two vacancies then, um, and you'll see a discussion in under new business concerning the updated beautification committee ordinance.
Um, so, um, so are we, we gonna publish then? Will we publish the planning commission and beautification committee?
So there are three people for the planning commission, um, who are already interviewed. There's a fourth interview that is to be scheduled, um, so those are, that's everybody who has applied from the last round. The beautification committee, we will plan to advertise for those openings come January, hopefully after more of an established ordinance update, so at least the folks can know kind of what they're getting into as far as term lengths and commitments and that.
Um, just making open call, all the volunteers, if anybody's gonna drop out.
Um, I thought we had one more for the market house that should be approved also.
Market house, um...
If I was following that chain correctly.
The market house, if I recall, um...
Mark?
Mark Richmond, uh, will be on your appointments for January 2nd.
Okay, but I just, during that, that email we, we had...
Yep, everybody else will be, um, on January 2nd aside from the zoning hearing board. They just happened to be bowled back in time for me to publish the agenda.
Right on.
Um, other updates, just a reminder about the January 2nd meeting, so this will start at 5:30. It'll be the final meeting of council at 5:30, then a quick reorganizational meeting of council at 5:40. Witness is also where the junior council people will be sworn in. They'll have a board of health meeting at 5:50 and council's regular meeting, first meeting of 2024 at 6:00. Uh, your first two should be very short. There's not anything on the actual agenda under new business. Uh, those have been, are going to be advertised in the paper tomorrow and then next Wednesday, so advertisement of those meetings. Then the final item I have is that the water authority, uh, it was announced today, received a $300,000 grant from CFA, the Pennsylvania Finance...
Commo Finance Authority.
Thank you. Commo Finance Authority, uh, for Hillcrest Water Storage Tank Replacements. Tim can elaborate on it if you can.
So the good thing is we're gonna talk about at our meeting because taking down the Hill, taking out the Hillcrest tank caused a lot of pressure problems and we hadn't anticipated that. So I just talked with our project manager today and we're looking to put up, um, not quite a whole nother, uh, storage tank, but a smaller one that would be able to alleviate those problems while we take Hillcrest out of, out of service. So we're gonna see if that grant will cover that or not. So that's our hope. So very happy to get that grant, very competitive.
The small, will it be a permanent one or just...
It will be permanent, but just smaller. It's like, the way Bob is like more narrow and straight up, uh, just enough to, in case something happens to the Hillcrest tank, uh, you don't have worry about the pressure issues that you might have over there.
And just to clarify, this is not owned by Hillcrest, this is owned by the Water of...
I'm sure, yeah, we just call it the Hillcrest tank.
Because it's on the...
The location is at the top of Hillcrest.
That's all that I have. Um, council subcommittee reports, um, housing redevelopment, uh, besides our housing plan moving forward and, uh, the rental inspection program moving forward, um... Just trying to see if I'm forgetting anything. I don't think so. Larry, do you have any?
I don't have any.
I, that's all I have to report, um, community engagement.
Um, I did, I just wanna mention, you know, I came in as communication to council a few weeks ago, the letter from, uh, Fifth Ward residents regarding some infrastructure and just really appreciate that, um, staff was able to set up kind of like a consistent way for them to communicate and, and get some of the infrastructure concerns that they have checked out with Public Works and taken care of. So, um, that was great to see worked out, so thanks to staff for the work on that. Um, and thanks, it was nice that like, right, that the Fifth Ward neighborhood has a residence council that can, you know, come together as a body and submit, you know, and ask to, um, to the city, so that's, uh, that's great. Um, and, um, yeah, I, I just, I don't know if this is community engagement thing, but we had so many volunteers, so many people applied for a lot of vacancies that they've got in this, this first round, so that was great to, great to see so many folks, um, stepping up and willing to serve the city in that way. Maybe a record number, I don't know if it has, I don't know if we've ever counted, so I say...
I guess I was just thinking about housing and the Common Roots project. I don't know if you want to speak to that at all, but, you know, it's kind of somewhere between community engagement and that event, because that was between our meetings, right?
Sure, sure. Um, uh, Common Roots, uh, I got the first, what is it called, the Neighborhood Assistance Program, Grant Program through CBDG, um, because, uh, they are, um, you know, creating wealth and opportunity, right, um, uh, in, and creating the, the dream of home ownership again, right, where, where really it is, it's just not there and that's not in Meadville, that's not unique to Meadville, that's across the country, right? So, um, they're creating a, a land trust, correct? Um, I use land bank and land trust, interchangeably sometimes and it's different. Right, yeah, they're totally different, so I apologize, but, um, right, so to make affordable housing for people, right, people giving us the ability to own a home, um, at the wages that we make, right, and sometimes, a lot of times those aren't livable wages, so it's a, um, um, it's a big deal here in Meadville. They're, um, that's a partnership between Alloki College, they were gonna tear down these homes, they didn't. Their neighborhood did not want them to tear down the homes and they didn't. And, uh, through Common Roots, they're gonna be able to, Common Roots is gonna be able to offer these houses to, to, uh, real people that in no other way would be able to own a home and that's a big deal and that's through, um, donations, uh, from local businesses and, um, and then these nonprofits and, and the city and all, you know, we share a vision that, um, is driven by the need of people who live here, right, so that's, um, that's important, right? We're, we're making the city a place that works for the people who live here and, and that's a big deal and Common Roots is driving, um, a lot of that in the, the housing sector. So, um, we appreciate them, we appreciate Alloki College for, uh, making that available and just not tearing the housing down, right, because they could do what they want, they're, and they didn't and, uh, we just really appreciate that, so, um, I'm not sure if anybody has anything else to say about that, but it was, um, it was a big deal and I was happy to be a part of it and I'm happy that it's happening here.
Yeah, I, I like, you know, I think the, one of the good things is if you go by and look at the homes, they're very nice homes, you know, it's nothing that someone has to worry about moving into and repairs or anything. I think it's, it's a good model and again, like, uh, you said, thank Alloki College for donating the, the homes.
Well, and Common Roots for having the vision, right?
Right, right, definitely.
Um, because what they've shown is there aren't just two solutions to a problem, right? There can be that third solution, right, to a, to a problem and, um, thinking outside of the box isn't bad. We don't always have to do what we've done before, so.
Yeah.
And then, uh, finance.
Presser?
I'm just so happy that we have a, a, our budget. That's my report. I just not have to be like, oh no. Yeah, that's, that's my report. Thank you, Tim, thank you.
We have not met as a subcommittee, uh, for a few weeks, uh, but we are number crunching a couple of projects just to see where things, where things go. Other than that, nothing else to report.
Wait on, um, finance, or, not finance, infrastructure, sorry.
Autumn?
Um, another grant that came my way that I circulated today, um, was for rural, I think it was specific, it was, I think it was specifically for rural communities for, uh, the, and, and some of the, for rural communities, infrastructure and some of the algebra projects are stormwater culvert repair, so thinking about some of those, um, high priority infrastructure projects in particular, what came up when I think about that was Ray Street Lumber with lots of, uh, more anticipated traffic, so it could be, uh, looking at what needs to be, uh, uh, replaced and, and fixed down there, which I know that we have done. I know that there are, uh, we've been given ratings of our bridges and, uh, capital improvements, but that could be resurfacing, that might be helpful, I don't know where I put it, but, um, there's money for that, for, uh, there's money for that work from USDA, um, spent that around, hopefully we can maybe look at that in the coming year. Um, I think that applications due at the end of February. Um, and, uh, slowly but surely, uh, continuing to think about solar on DEP and have, uh, intentions to, to come back with, with a proposal, um, sometime in Q1, the first quarter of 2024 that we can maybe consider.
And at our last council meeting, we did apply for a grant for the parking garage. How many months until we hear one way or another?
Um, I think it's LSA, so local share. It's gonna be dependent upon how fast the government moves can be. We've had a couple of different applications into LSA in the past and time has varied from nine months to more than a year to hear back.
Thank you.
Um, and we, we had also talked, um, this is maybe a larger conversation for like 2024 planning and, and setting priorities and anything like that, but we had talked about, uh, doing a, a town hall meeting at a midway point, I'm just reminding us of that, I guess, um, once we got that kind of initial conditions assessment, that first leg from, from Porter Consulting Engineers, um, for the parking garage to, to have a, a community session. Um, maybe it's in, maybe January, February, I'm just resurfacing that for our collective memory, yeah, uh, and then we can hold ourselves to it. Um, yeah. And other infrastructure related, uh, conversation on the agenda tonight, I'm excited for. I think we're, it's gonna be really exciting.
Okay, um, old business?
Done.
All right, we'll move on to new business. Uh, approval, or approved appointments of zoning hearing board, Lyoma, Jonathan Bibens and Jim Podlowski, is that right? Uh, as an alternate, move to approve the slate. Discussion?
If council recalls, there are two seats plus one alternate vacancy. Um, all of these applicants have, are currently serving, um, and they, it was a unanimous decision to reappoint by those who did not.
Um, does anybody have any questions on this? Vogel?
McKnight?
Aye.
Myers?
Aye.
Roa?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
Kinder?
Aye.
Uh, discussion, beautification committee ordinance update.
Uh, so this was brought up at a past council meeting to maybe reconsider and reevaluate the beautification committee ordinance. Before you is a redlined version of the ordinance with some of NOCS's suggested updates.
From Petersburg.
From Petersburg.
So Peter had rewritten the ordinance and then we have some revisions from there, so this don't reflect all of the changes from the existing ordinance.
So you're circling Peter's ordinance originally and then, uh, once we receive NOCS's revisions on Peters, that is what is in your packet today. Um, I'll let Peter kind of handle any content questions and legal questions to Tim.
Okay, well now that I see it's a discussion, I feel less bad for sending emails today. I thought it was different, but I will bring them up. Um, I think that this all makes sense, just the, I think the questions that I posed to you were like, there is a provision that allows for the appointment of, of council members and city staff and citizens, um, and if we give, uh, you know, four-year terms that don't coincide, right, like, so if, you know, in my last year, I'm appointed to the beautific, or of council, I'm appointed to the beautification committee, is there an impact in terms of my beautification committee term? Uh, minor, anyway. I don't know that it matters, it's purely hypothetical at this point, because we haven't appointed any of us to do any...
So I will say that I'm picking up now the fact that the red lines don't necessarily change, um, reflect all of our changes. We've also had some changes in the composition section as well as the appointment in terms of office. Nothing that changes the intent, but just changes the language for how, um, it is accomplished. Uh, Autumn, in your hypothetical, the way this is set up, um, is that there'd be nine members, no less than five of whom shall be resident citizens of the city who are not city staff or elected officials. The remaining four may be from city staff or elected officials with no more than two being from city council. So if you had two members of city council appointed to the committee for a term which was longer than the period of time that they are city council members, they would then be kicked into the resident pool.
Sure.
And you're allowed to have a minimum of five that are residents and the other four, which are either staff or council, is not required, it's just who may be. So if they flip over into residents, then you would have six residents and three members who would be staff or council. So there's, there's an ability to allow that to occur.
So there's a question. Um, yeah, I think the other feedback that I had is the committee initiative, um, section C. Um, I, basically the way that I'm reading it is that to do anything, the committee needs to get permission, like explicit permission, permission or directive from council, um, and I sat on the beautification committee in my experience, that was kind of stifling and folks just waited around for directive and it kind of felt like a waste of people's time and energy in some ways. And so I think if there could be kind of more, um, if that, if, if the onus could be shifted maybe and like, they can do what they want if it's in line with city comprehensive plan or other like public city plans and council reserves the right to redirect or something like that, but like to let them have some agency.
My, my guess, and Peter could make me wrong, part of this, um, and we can definitely change it, is due to the expenditure of funds that might not be in the realm of what the beautification committee currently can spend funds on. Um, so if they have a project that they need city funds, that they've come to the council before for some funding, um, I think that's maybe where this is the line drawn on the initiative factor of that, if it's expenditure using city funds.
So maybe there's a way to make that explicit, where it's like if you're spending city money...
You have to come and ask.
You have to come and ask, but like if it's just because you, if you just wanna study, report something, you don't have to ask us to study or report something.
That would be good.
We have problems getting a quorum.
Uh, yeah.
Because it's like 15 members, right?
All right. May I make a suggestion that we redefine quorum as opposed being majority, it would be a majority of a majority. So for example, with 15 members, a majority would be eight and majority of that would be five. So you could have a body of 15 people and as long as five show up, you have enough to do business.
So if we had a nine member, four, the majority is five and a majority of a majority is three, so you could have a meeting with three people.
So these are written such that there would be bylaws that the committee would put together that would be kicked up to the city council for approval? That is the level discourse that should occur in the bylaws. So that's not written in here, but can be addressed in those bylaws.
Okay, I was looking at our old, our existing ordinance and it was addressed in the ordinance itself.
That's not addressed in the current version that's before you. The only other piece that we had comment on that we didn't provide written comment was, uh, on the backend of the ordinance in items J and K, it had talked about removal of officers or members for misfeasance, malfeasance, or non-feasance, which I think is a heavy standard to, which severely limits city council's ability to, um, impact the membership on that board. I think, um, quite frankly, that if you serve on a city committee, you should be serving at the pleasure of council, um, and malfeasance, misfeasance, and non-feasance are kinds of terms of art that require findings that you are doing something illegal or inappropriate and whatnot. Um, I would think that we'd want to rewrite that to be at the discretion of council. Because my job is to give you as much power as possible. You tell me how you want to do.
Is there a way to weight it back to them a little bit, at the discretion of council based on, I don't know, their, uh, I don't know, something type of accountability?
If you look at removal under K, what I would suggest it says, is keep it how it's written now, but it would read this, "City council may at its own discretion or upon a petition of a majority of the members of the beautification committee, remove a member."
Yeah.
So it gives you the discretion or it gives the committee an opportunity to remove somebody who's not, um, appropriate to be...
Yeah.
On that committee. And I just think we throw a period there.
Do we have, is that language in other...
The, the one that Tim is suggesting, that's most recently in the EAC ordinance. Um, I think that was suggested based on issues that we may have had with other authorities where problems such as Tim described rise into the level of malfeasance, misfeasance, non-feasance is really difficult, um, to remove someone from a board and we have had that problem in the past. Currently, the boards we have are pretty good about recognizing when they just don't have the time commitment to serve, um, but just in the future in case something were to happen.
And I, I guess I, and just to be clear, this is not, the, the standard is the misfeasance, malfeasance and, uh, not, non-feasance, that's the standard on all the other boards. Is that what I'm, I'm hearing or is that like basically, what, I mean, from what we can think?
Correct, yeah, from the, for the most part, that's what we've seen, um, that language.
In, in the older ordinances that were, okay, just, that's why I was, I just needed to...
And just kind of stepping back a little bit, the main...
And just kind of stepping back a little bit, the main changes that are presented here are changes to the number of, of people that are serving to nine, the addition of the provision for bylaws, removal of officers in the sunshine.
And the term.
And the terms.
Yep.
Can I ask a question about the composition? If, for the ABCs, is there, is that typical for, will, does council ever go and, it was just interesting that elected officials, I didn't know that we could serve on, we can what?
Yeah, council can plan, serve on planning commission too. They could serve on the housing authority.
But the only thing you're prevented from serving on is the zoning hearing board?
Interesting. So when we go to interview, we interview ourselves, well, what do you?
You have to apply.
I don't know, do we? I know. It's a good question.
Okay, thanks. I, I was not aware of that, I thought it was a either or. Thank you.
So if council's comfortable with this draft, and with the changes that Tim has suggested, I think the intent was going to be for Peter to bring the drafts before the beautification committee at their next meeting, for them to review and comment on. And then that will come back before council again for another discussion.
I'm fine with that.
All right. Resolution, authorized signatures, extended CDBG cooperation agreement, city of Meadville and Crawford County. Have a motion?
I do.
Second.
Discussion?
A resolution of the council of the city of Meadville extending the cooperation agreement by and between Crawford County and the city of Meadville for CDBG program administration. So this, in your packet, is the current agreement that the city has with the county that was signed in 2019. The 2019 agreement expires at the end of this year. We just, the county and the city just haven't had really time to go back and forth on a new agreement. So what's before you is a resolution simply to extend the 2019 agreement exactly as is for another six months while we work out a new contract between the two entities.
And this covers all of the CDBG awards under the length of, like, under the, like, the disagreements, not just any specific here? And we expect, is it like June or something that it was redated? Like, giving a full six months?
Yes, end of June.
Yep.
And we're anticipating that we'll have the time in that, in that six months to come to?
It shouldn't, the new agreement shouldn't be drastically different. There might be slightly different fees, but aside from that, it should basically be the same.
Does anybody have any questions?
No.
McKnight?
Aye.
Myers?
Aye.
Rowa?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
And Kinder?
Aye. Resolution, award bid, Heidi Cooper Park Improvement Contract to XL Excavating Incorporated, Can I have a motion?
Motion. Second.
Discussion?
A resolution of the council of the city of Meadville awarding the bid to XL Excavating Inc. for Heidi Cooper Park improvements in the amount of $1,347,300.
McKnight?
Yep. Sorry, let's talk about that. So bids were open last Friday. The city did receive five different bids. XL Excavating out of Cambridge Springs was the lowest bidder for the project. And PCE, who is the engineer, and Nathan Zula, Public Works Director, all felt very comfortable with awarding the contract to them.
I think if it's, well, votes while that you're here, thanks for coming.
Yeah.
Do you have anything you want to say about your approvals?
No, I'm just the estimator.
I'm here to do the work, man.
I'm just the number cruncher. Basically here to see if we're going to do all the addendums in total, or if you guys decided to break it up into pieces, but it sounds like you're going to go for the whole shebang.
Remind us of our grant award, can you afford the whole shebang?
We can afford the whole shebang. We did receive a $2 million award from CDBG through a competitive grant that the county helped, submitted on behalf of the city. We also received funding from DCNR, and that's matched with some city funding.
And the bathrooms are separate?
The bathrooms have been completed, they are separate, they were funded through the city's CDBG coronavirus funding.
That's just exciting.
So there, so what's in front of us is to approve the, like, 1.3 million, which includes all these additional things, the pedestrian trail improvements, the dog park, disc golf course, the cornhole court, and horseshoe court, and the drinking fountain bottle station.
So just for a little context, we break up the bid document into a base bid, and then alternative bids that the contractors can bid on. And we didn't know where contracting prices were going to come back at, so you always, we break it down, so in case we need to piecemeal something together for the project. But with the bids that we did receive, we are going, we would suggest doing all of the alternate projects.
So bids, the alternates are?
Additional projects.
Yeah, but they're not freestanding, and they're basically, assuming that the contractor gets the main bid. The pricing, the pricing is based on that, not on just cherry picking each one, okay? And this, this bid with all the alternates is lower than anybody else with the main bid, okay?
And the grant funding we got to will probably go to some staff administration and public works, and so it seems like there's cushion, but that will, it will not actually be that much.
Yes.
Cushion, correct, in terms of the funding.
Bless you.
Thank you. This is exciting. And, and we're anticipating the construction to start this, this construction season, we have this been?
If not sooner.
Okay.
See?
Well, we, we might start with the tree removal and some of the stuff that's not weather dependent.
Right, right.
But obviously, we won't be doing any paving or concrete work or anything like that until the weather's more, hospital.
We should set up a meet and greet with our shade tree commission, and maybe they can consult about what trees to save and how. And we really love fish trees at Heidi Cooper.
I, I think.
But some of them have to, have to go.
Yeah, I think PCE was very selective in which ones had to go to accommodate the new parking areas and such, and they were, you know, it's very selective, the trees are actually, which specific ones are identified.
Yeah, that's good to hear, I know, yeah, I know that Ashley and Nathan and the shade tree did some walkthroughs and stuff, so.
Yes, I, I, Ashley, PCE, and Alice Scholander, our shade tree liaison and arborist, went very thoroughly through the trees that needed to be removed. So they were definitely consulted as part of the process.
Tree hugger. As responsive to your tree removal, Fred. This is great, I'm excited. My wedding dog park got in, so I'm happy about it. Does anybody have any other questions? Do we have anticipated timeline for construction? Like, you said it was.
Contractually, I believe it's 365 days from the notice to proceed meeting, if my memory serves me correctly, but don't hold me to gospel on that. I've been looking at like seven contracts this week, and they're all starting to blur together.
We'll take it in a year. They will take that.
All right, roll call.
McKnight?
Aye.
Myers?
Aye.
Rowa?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
Kinder?
Aye.
Ordinance third and final readings, 2024 budget, can I have a motion for the third reading?
Second.
Discussion?
An ordinance of the city of Meadville, Crawford County, Pennsylvania, adopting and establishing a budget for all funds of the city of Meadville for the year 2024, including the general fund, debt and capital funds, liquid fuel program fund, stormwater management program fund, parking fund, real estate management funds, and special revenue funds, appropriating specific sums estimated to be required for the specific purposes of the various programs and funds of the city of Meadville for 2024, and establishing authorized maximum personnel complements for certain departments of the city of Meadville for 2024.
Questions? Roll call.
McKnight?
Aye.
Myers?
Aye.
Rowa?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
Kinder?
Aye.
Motion for final reading of the 2024 budget?
Motion.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
McKnight?
Aye.
Myers?
Aye.
Rowa?
Aye.
Vogel? Kinder?
Aye. Ordinance third and final readings for the levying tax for, levying taxes for 2024, can I have a motion for the third reading?
Motion. Second.
Discussion?
An ordinance for the city of Meadville, Crawford County, Pennsylvania, levying the following taxes and fixing the race of taxation for the city of Meadville for the year 2024, being a tax for general revenue purposes, a tax to pay interest and principal on any indebtedness incurred pursuant to the Local Government Unit Debt Act, a tax for capital improvements, a tax for recreation and parks, a tax for shade trees, and a resident tax for general revenue purposes, all of which taxes are levied pursuant to the applicable authority and establishing the penalty charge for the late payment of such taxes.
Does anybody have any questions?
I have a question, I asked it earlier. Since the school district does not use a per capita tax, the question is whether we could appropriate what would have been their share. I don't know the answer, I'm not sure if our solicitor has that right off the top of his head, and I'm not sure, and if he wanted to retain that, they can probably give us another $30,000 a year.
Tim seems to be saying, yes.
I was looking at either Tim.
I, I don't think that we can, off the top of my head. We've advertised this ordinance as is, and would not be able to amend it tonight to add a new tax to it. So I think it'd be something that should be investigated for calendar year 2025. It's nothing that we could address this evening.
Okay, we're going to enact it in '24 for '25, theoretically.
Correct.
Okay.
If it's authorized by the law.
Yeah.
And the mechanics of that would be that the school district starts to charter per capita tax, and then we take it from them, like, what is the, does that look like?
The per capita tax can be levied at a maximum rate of, I think this is a better way of explaining it, the per capita tax can be levied at a maximum rate of $10. It can be levied by a municipality and/or a school district. If both enacted, it is shared 50/50. If they're not enacting it, then we need to look to see, I believe our per capita tax right now is $5. We would have to see next year about raising that to 10, if the school district is not enacting its own per capita.
Okay, we have a $5 residence tax and a $5 per capita, for a total of 10, we call it per capita. So this would be a question of whether it would be $5 and $10 for a total of 15.
Correct, that would be the question.
So, something for the finance committee, a little bit here.
Next year.
Do we have any other questions on, on this?
Not raising taxes, right?
Okay, roll call for the third reading.
McKnight?
Aye.
Myers?
Aye.
Rowa?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
Kinder?
Aye. Can I have a motion for the final reading?
Motion.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
McKnight?
Aye.
Myers?
Aye.
Rowa?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
Kinder?
Aye.
Public comment on non-agenda items.
None.
Council member statements? Jim?
Merry Christmas, everybody.
Congratulations.
I was just thinking, thank you, Maria, for sending that letter to the fifth board and getting that all connected, that was just, I, when you were, I totally forgot about that, but it was really cool to see that all connected, so thank you for that. And Merry Christmas.
Mary?
Yeah, Merry Christmas, and, you know, to me, a lot of lonely or senior citizens, or even people that, you know, lost loved ones, think about them, maybe if you have the opportunity to go out and just say hello to somebody, you know, let them know that they aren't alone.
I don't? Yeah, um, the end of the year, it's been a good year, we've reflected on this a little bit, but, you know, we just passed the budget, we passed the tax levy, and we started the year and it looked a lot bleaker than, than it does now, and things feel good, and that's, you know, again, we think we've given our thanks a lot, and some praises to our staff, but just at the end of the year, say it again, thanks for your hard work, and openness to new things and figuring stuff out. I'm glad that we've been able to do that this year. I am excited for 2024, I'm excited to make time to look at the priorities that we set for 2023, and see where we moved on them, and then set some for 2024, so that's also maybe a request that we have a study session or something of the sort to do that, to have that conversation, maybe in January, maybe in February, depending on, on scheduling of things, but I'm excited for that, we've been able to move on a lot of stuff, I look at the list that we've got in, in the council conference room, the mayor's office, and it's, it's like nice to see where we've made any progress. And like, all of it amounts to, you know, not having to raise taxes, and being able to introduce stuff like exciting parks improvements and things like that, so. So it's good when we set priorities in the beginning of the year, I'm looking forward to doing that. And, yeah, I hope folks have a restful and joyful holiday, and wishing folks a happy new year. So again, this is my favorite time of the year, and I love the spirit, right? We give, we spend time together, we enjoy each other, and we care about each other at this time of year. I'm really hoping that people understand what Meadville is, and that, that we're moving in that direction every single day, and although this is the end of the year, that we can carry that into next year, through the whole year, right? That spirit of radical love, and driving us to be a community that works for the people who live here, and, you know, just making this place exactly where we want to live, and being a part of the changes, right? I said it earlier today, there aren't just two solutions to each problem, and the fact is, is that Meadville is now a community that looks at other options, and in that way, we have been able to work together, the city has, and, and everybody that's worked here, and our city partners, and getting some things that, that maybe didn't seem like an option before, right? Like free internet in the park, right? Cutting down over $700,000 in our budget in a year, offering more safety, not only to our community, but to communities on the outskirts of Meadville. And all of that came because we thought outside of the box, and we put the needs of the people who live here first. And if that doesn't speak Christmas, and speak love, and speak us coming together, and speak a magical community, I don't know what does. Meadville is a brave and courageous place, and I am very lucky to live here amongst the people in this room, and amongst the people that watch, I know there's only a handful, but amongst the people that I walk past, and their houses, and, and, right, like, so give this town grace, give us time, and this will be the place that everybody wants to live, a place that, that, that everybody is proud of, has dignity in, and can afford to be and find their joy. And I believe we're moving in that direction, and I am really honored and proud to be a part of it, and to be able to serve the people who live here. And with that, I am going to ask for a motion to adjourn this meeting.
So move, second.
Discussion? Roll call.
McKnight?
Aye.
Myers?
Aye.
Rowa?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
And Kinder?
Aye.